And we're ready, y'all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Tuesday, November 16th meeting of the Gallatin City Council. It is 6:00 PM, and we are going to call this meeting to order. We'll begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, Councilman Alexander is going Hayes is going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd stand with me, please.
Very hard pray. Turned grace God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for this beautiful day that that has created. We thank you for our city, dear Lord. We pray for all of our workers, and we thank you, Lord, for this meeting tonight. Let everything we say and do be pleasing to your side, Jesus' name we do pray in every heart's head. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell is absent. Councilman Alexander?
Present.
Councilman Fan?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilwoman Love is also absent, and Councilman Overton?
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Next, before you have the minutes from the October 19th, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting?
So moved.
Ackern.
Motion to approve them by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections requested? I see no one with any. All those in favor of approving the minutes from October 19th, 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The minutes are unanimously approved. Now's the time in the meeting for public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time where anyone who is in the audience may come forward and speak to any item that is on this evening's agenda. You'll have five minutes to do so. We ask that you introduce yourself, also share your address with us. And I do want you to know that there's a period of time at the end of the meeting where you may address any item that is not on the evening's agenda. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is open. Seeing no one indicating that they wish to come forward, I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and move on now to mayor's comments. Few things I do want to recognize having happened this past weekend because it really was a fabulous weekend in Gallatin. This past weekend, the Holiday Tinsel and Treasures happened again, and I don't think I've ever seen more people shopping around Gallatin, which was really exciting and heartwarming. Congrats to the chamber on that event. Also had the opportunity to attend something that slipped my radar, but I was invited to, and it was the first, the inaugural Gallatin Comic Con, which I didn't know what that was. I do now. I attended that, and there were lines out the door. And I think they had 6,000 people come in to go to that event held over at Epic Event Center, sponsored by Town Square Comics and Records and Comics. And these were primarily people from out of town coming to our city. So congratulations to them on an event well done, and we will look forward to next year. And also want to recognize the Parks and Recreation Department and those who were associated with the VIP Day at the Miracle Park. And then finally, I want you all to know that on Sunday, there was a recognition by the Dollars of the American Revolution of Thomas, Captain Thomas Cotton, for whom Cotton Town is named. And that happened this past Sunday at the bridal house in Cotton Town. So that was another really cool thing that was happening. I certainly want to wish everyone an upcoming very happy Thanksgiving. Remember, city offices will be closed. I have several events just to make sure that you are aware of and the public is aware of. The first of which is this Saturday. I should also mention the Beretta sale. Beretta held their annual pop-up sale at Civic Center this past weekend. Again, thanks to Parks and Rec for helping with that, and thanks for Beretta for having it here. Anyway, this Saturday at the Gallatin Civic Center is the Christmas Harvest Craft Show. It's always a great show, happens from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM this Saturday. On Wednesday of next week, there's a ribbon cutting for the widening of State Route 109, happening over in Lebanon, celebrating the conclusion of that part of the project. As I mentioned, city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday and Friday. On that Saturday, and I have a resolution to this effect in just a minute, is the Shop Small Saturday that happens. You know, you have Black Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and then on Saturday, it's going to be Shop Small Saturday, and that's recognized and recognized well here in Gallatin. On that Saturday evening is the Merry Mantle of Rosemont. On Monday is the Gallatin Christmas Tree Lighting. On Tuesday, December 7th, is Chuba Christmas. And on Friday, 12:10, is the Gallatin Coin Show. And then finally, I will mention that on the 11th of December is the Gallatin Christmas Parade. Now, the city council does not meet for the next two weeks, so everyone, please be aware of that. One, we don't meet for the Thanksgiving week, and then the next week is the fifth Tuesday. So we won't see each other again until Tuesday, until December. So that's why I went through such a long list of events. As I mentioned, I do have a proclamation to present. This is for Small Business Saturday. I was hoping some members from the Gallatin Chamber would be here to receive this, but they're not. So I'm just going to read it from right there, and so everyone is aware of what Shop Small Saturday is. Proclamation looks like this. And it says, "Whereas the city of Gallatin, Tennessee celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community; and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States that represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and that they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way that they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encourage family and friends to do so as well. And whereas, 56% of shoppers reported that they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of social media recommendation. And whereas, the city of Gallatin supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Shop Small, as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of the city of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year." So that's the proclamation for that. And seriously, I truly believe that our small businesses are so much of the character and the texture of our city. I hope that you will do all that you can this holiday season to keep your shopping as local as you possibly can. I think that concludes mayor's comments unless someone is thinking of something I have forgotten, which I may well have. Yeah, if not, you have to bring it up during other business at the end of the meeting. But right now, we'll move on to the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is second reading on ordinance 0211-065. And for that, Councilman Overton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance, City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning 9.982 acre parcel from R-40 Low Density Residential District to MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, approving a preliminary master development plan for Nichols Phase, Place Phases 2 and 3, located south of Nichols Lane and east of Ferguson Boulevard, authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances provided for severability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman George. Opening the floor for any discussion. Seeing no one acting like they want to speak. This is second reading on ordinance 0211-065. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved on second reading unanimously. Item number two is first reading on ordinance 0211-69. Councilman Alexander?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is an order appropriating $10,693.33 from revenue received from insurance recovery, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 0211-69. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes first reading unanimously. Item three is first reading on the ordinance 0211-70. Councilman Overton?
It says, "An order, City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning 10.72 acre parcel from Planned Business Park District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and approval of preliminary master development plan for Oxford Station, Phase 4, containing 51 multifamily residential units, and two open space tracks located south of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard, stout rate State Route 386 and west of Offit Drive. Authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And I so move."
Second.
Okay, there is a motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Opening the floor for discussion. Okay, this is first reading on the ordinance 0211-70. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number four is first reading on ordinance 0211-71. Councilman Fan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning four lots, compromising 3.98 plus or minus acres from the R-15 Medium Density Residential District to the R-15 PRD Medium Density Residential Planned Residential District, with a preliminary master development plan for Monday Rogers Road, located south of Rogers Road and west of Mark Circle, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances provided for severability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Ackern.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? It's a first reading on ordinance 0211-71. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading does pass unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance 0211-72. Councilman Overton?
Thank you, Mayor. I will say that the one that's in your package accidentally got put in there, but the one that we passed at the committee, I'm going to read it, okay? So it says, "An ordinance, City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning 25.32 acre from Planned Business Park District to MU Multiple Use District, 10.38 acres from Planned Business Park District to the PGC Planned General Commercial District, and 4.28 acres from the MU Mixed Use District to the PGC Planned General Commercial District with a preliminary master development plan for Chandler Marketplace, on a total of 42.46 acres located north of Harris Lane, east of Greenlee Boulevard, and south of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard, State Route 386. Authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances, providing for a severability, and providing for an effective date. And I so move."
Second.
And I do want to be really clear here with where we are with these circumstances because last week, what you all moved on was what was included in your packet, which was different than what the Planning Commission had actually recommended. So what the Planning Commission recommended is what Councilman Overton just presented, but I think to truly make sure that everyone understands what we're looking at, I'm going to ask Mr. McCord to come forward, explain further, answer any questions, explain where the discrepancy was, what happened, and ask Miss Haumacali to weigh in if you feel like we're missing any information that really needs to be publicly disclosed.
Okay, Bill McCord, city planner. The ordinance that you have before you that was each on, passed out to each of your desks, you also have a copy of an email, it's a memo pertaining to this ordinance. It's an amended ordinance that is different, as you had mentioned, than the one that was discussed and presented at the committee last week. The one at the committee was the Planning Department's recommendation, which would have changed all of the property to MU, but kept essentially the same master development plan. The ordinance here that you have is the recommendation from the Planning Commission, which we, since that time, we've gotten a specific detailed legal description. So those numbers changed just slightly. But what this does is creates an MU zoning on the north part of the property where the apartments are proposed, and then the balance of the property, the south part, will be PGC. Now, there's a small sliver adjacent to Greenlee Boulevard right now that is already PGC. So that's the discrepancy between the total acreage in the master plan and the combination of the rezoning acreage. So this ordinance does have some restrictions as that was listed and approved by the Planning Commission to prohibit basically what might be considered non-appropriate type uses, automotive uses, limited warehousing uses, vehicular craft and related sales, and automotive repair and cleaning, those types of things. So this ordinance, those uses are normally permitted in the PGC district, but this ordinance would prohibit them from this master plan. So one other change that you see there in red type is that we're changing in Exhibit B, number one, we're changing the word from restrict those uses to prohibit those uses. And we're also referencing the latest plan that came in, dated October 27th as opposed to October 14th. So that's the changes in the ordinance. Now, the memorandum that you also have on your table addresses the additional condition that y'all discussed last week about ensuring that the hotel will be constructed first in Phase 1. So we have some proposed language here. It's in red type, which would be an additional condition you might want to add to this ordinance. In addition to that, there are other uses, in addition to those automotive-related uses and warehouse uses that we identified that are currently a permitted use of PGC that you, we want you to consider whether you think this is appropriate for this master plan. And we would like to, for you to consider excluding these uses. And those include wholesale sales, retail business supply, which is very similar, and food service drive-in. Now, this doesn't prohibit restaurants. As a matter of fact, we certainly encourage restaurants on this property, but it wouldn't prohibit drive-through restaurants. So we're promoting the sit-down type restaurants as opposed to, let's say, a Sonic type of restaurant or your typical drive-through restaurant. And so if you agree with those, we would like you to have a motion to amend this new ordinance that you have in front of you to either add those issues as excluded uses and of course to add in the condition about the hotel would be constructed as part of Phase 1. Now, one thing about the hotel as well, because as we've seen here just recently in town, there is one hotel that began construction and because of the pandemic, kind of suspended operations, and now it's kind of restarted. But you might want to tie the hotel construction to either a CO or just issuing a building permit so that other uses don't jump the gun ahead of the hotel.
Well, in that instance, didn't that hotel have a building permit and then it?
I don't know the details. I think it was, there were supply issues and
I would suggest maybe not moving forward with future phases until the completion because within Phase 1, is there more than the hotel?
Yes, they didn't identify any particular phases, but y'all had talked about adding a Phase 1, which would include the hotel in it. And that could be the only thing in Phase 1, other than maybe some of the street improvements, would be the hotel. And then they could identify future phases. They could phase it and
Well, I think you could include in Phase 1 so that they could begin simultaneously, also commercial or, you know, restaurants or retail or whatever, but not let them move on to future phases should the hotel not become completed so that they don't do something like happened to us before where they wind up taking down what they've already built so that they can do housing or whatever. I do want to also acknowledge the recommendations that you are presenting to us to consider. I would ask, is there an opportunity with the food service drive-in? Because my understanding was that you thought it was a good idea to limit to one, but I don't see that in this language. It sounds like it prohibits them in their entirety.
Right, a drive-in food service it would prohibit. So unless, if y'all want to include that in there, we won't have
That was how I understood that it was going to be, but I don't. I see the value in prohibiting the drive-through, so.
So basically what you're saying is we just need to amend it to include these items?
You're supportive of it?
If you support that, yeah.
Well, and you can amend it in its entirety or specifically to the language about the hotel?
Can we limit it to how many is there and not limit, not prohibit all of them?
That's what I was just asking. And you could, but I kind of didn't see the wisdom in it too.
You wouldn't choose which ones are going there, which ones aren't. You just, you would just limit how many drive-thrus are there.
I don't have a problem leaving it like it is. I mean, as long as you have a sit-down restaurant, outside, you know, dining, whatever, I don't care.
Well, I think too, you know, one thing to consider is drive-through restaurants do create a different traffic. I think traffic, what's the word I'm looking for? Pardon? No, because there's a lot more traffic than a sit-down restaurant or
You're going to limit the type of restaurants you have too when you limit drive-through restaurants? And they'd consider that too?
I mean.
My question is, apartments could not be put in before the hotel, or the hotel couldn't get started and apartments go in.
Both of them. Well, you would need to add this condition to tie the hotel to Phase 1 and the apartments to some future phase beyond Phase 1 and require Phase 1 to be constructed, either permitted and/or CO'd before other phases could begin.
Well, I'll make, I'll make an amendment. Did we add these items in? Do we need to do anything with the language on the hotel or not, or what?
Phase it somehow, Miss Haumacali?
Phase the whole development?
The hotel because what Mr. McCord was describing is a concern that I share as well, that there could be a scenario in which the hotel was begun but never completed. And so how do you ensure that that hotel gets completed? But you don't want to hold up other types of commercial development.
Yeah, I think if you had multiple phases and you use this language and you added that the hotel must be completed prior to a building permit being issued in a subsequent phase or something of that effect.
Faces aren't delineated, so. I don't, could we make it specific to commercial before anything beyond commercial construction is developed?
Yeah, what I Hotel, like 80% complete?
Good, you could. But I also don't want to prohibit to keep other commercial developing simultaneously. So I don't want to say it has to be first before something else. But I think maybe if you kept, the hotel has to be, just throwing this out there, what you said, 80% complete before any residential phase could begin.
Depending on the hotel, it could be months.
All right, sure. Yeah, but that way that keeps us from having to draw phases and, you know, lets them get going.
This is our, if you got 50 or 60%, they're going to complete it.
As I'm telling you, when these guys go to their financial institutions and they get money to build these places, they're not going halfway build and stop. It costs them too much money. So once they start this project, they're not going to stop this project. So I don't know how you want to word it, but I'm just assuring you there, you know, with the financial part of it, they're not going to stop a project halfway through it.
Everyone besides me did.
Yeah, but there was a lot of situations involved with that, Craig, from downturn to
I don't think we should be making gauge, you know, I don't think that that's something for us to know or to make a determination based upon.
Whatever we do, we need to kind of keep us going together at the same time instead of just concentrating on one area. Make sure we're with it instead of just starting and stopping like we did before.
Well, that's why I think that my suggestion is a good one, that the hotel should be X amount complete before any resident. And anything else, commercial can happen simultaneously if you just put the caveat in there that residential construction cannot begin until the hotel is however X percentage complete.
I think that's good. I mean, and I don't mind, because we've got a second reading to go. If we can go ahead and amend this, y'all can work on the wording, bring it back to us for the second reading then.
So
Why don't, why doesn't the council tell us what they want to do?
I think what she said was good.
At what percent?
50%.
Okay, do you want to, because you made a motion, but we hadn't, we hadn't fixed the language.
50% complete?
Before any residential can begin, but any commercial can happen simultaneously. Okay.
So no commercial until 50%?
Residential. Commercial simultaneously.
Commercial can go simultaneous with the hotel.
The residential can't start until after 50% of the hotel, at least.
So you, so you want the hotel to be 50% complete? So you want a year down the road or whatever before they can start any other residential?
They can start residential.
They ought to be able to start them simultaneously.
I don't think so. I don't, I mean, that's my opinion. I don't get to vote though, so.
I think the commercial needs to go first.
Well, I agree, it needs to start at the same time at least and move on at the same time.
I guess, I guess what we're trying to avoid is just starting and then concentrating on the residential and complete that, then leave all this other commercial and hotel behind.
I can see it saying you can't start Phase 2 or whatever until this one gets completed, but I think they both need to start at the same time. I think we need
Commercial and the residential?
That would be up to the contractors, really.
But it should be.
Not if you put this in there.
But that's why, I mean, I understand what we're trying to accomplish, and I agree 100% with you. We need to be sure the retail gets put there. But I don't think you can, you should tie the developer's hands, whoever the developer's going to be. I don't think you should tie his hand and say you can't start any residential until you get this hotel completed. I think if they start them at the same time
They're saying 50%.
50%.
I understand.
And but, but I think too, I think last week, I think they were under the assumption that that was going to take place.
I mean, that was, that was the one piece of this you did mention last week.
Yeah.
And that's the developers representatives.
I think we're scaling it back from what we originally thought we were going to do. I thought, you know, probably get the hotel done and then start the residential.
Right now, I have a motion on an amendment, and that's as far as we've gotten.
A motion on the amendment as presented here.
Yep.
He's made the motion.
And is that to include everything that's on this sheet?
Yes.
Or just the hotel portion? Okay.
Do we not need to take them one by one?
Have to.
If we have the amendment this way, we don't have the 50% here at all.
Well, he
That's where you put it in there.
He's added that.
They're adding that, okay.
Who's going to determine 50%?
Do we have a second? Because we're not really supposed to be discussing if we don't have a second.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Okay, motion by Councilman Hayes on the amendment, second by Councilman Alexander, now officially opening for construct, for discussion. And I would say the building department would make the determination that it's 50% complete.
So on the hotels, is that what you're asking about still? You asking about the hotel?
He asked the question, who would make the determination that the hotel's 50% complete?
Building department.
And they're the ones issuing the building permits anyway, so. Any further discussion before we vote on the amendment?
I I I got a question. So you guys are saying if a Starbucks comes that wants to go out there, that you don't want a Starbucks in that area? As nice as they are. Is that what you're saying? You don't want Starbucks to be built there? I'm just using that that one particular name. You're saying you don't want a Starbucks or they not nice enough to go in that area? I mean, you're, I mean, that's crazy, guys.
I don't think it's crazy. I think a lot of it's traffic concerns and then a lot of it is. I, again, I thought that we were.
You got another coffee shop right down the street that you've allowed to go there. So now you're going to limit this guy from putting a Starbucks on his retail places?
I think the developer is probably with what we're trying to do.
I don't think so. Let's ask them. Their representatives are here.
We can get Marty to come up.
Okay, with everyone on this council to have the developer come speak to this.
I'll make a motion, let him speak.
Motion second, on favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Guys, are y'all okay with us limiting completely?
Let them introduce themselves and address.
I'm Marty Cook, Representative Developer. Trevor Cross with the developer as well. So just a couple of clarifications. At Planning Commission, the the uses that we agreed to limit were the automotive parking, the limited warehousing, the vehicular craft and related equipment sales, automotive servicing and the automotive repair and cleaning. That's what Planning Commission recommended. That's what we agreed to limit. Today, these three new proposed restrictions of retail business supply, wholesale sales and the food service came up. We are fine with the retail business supply and the wholesale sales. Here's the issue I have with the way the restriction is worded on the food service. It says, "A retail restaurant where food and beverages is prepared on site and provided to patrons for consumption on site within a building in a designated outdoor dining area and for takeout for consumption off premises or from a drive in window or within vehicles." As that is written, it would prevent any restaurant that allows takeout from being on this, on this development. As COVID has shown us, almost every restaurant allows takeout now. Chop House.
I don't think that's our intent to do that. If that's.
Well, that's the way it's worded.
Bill?
That is the definition in our zoning ordinance.
So that's the concern we have.
We can take that out then, that's fine.
Because and and as far as just a drive in, I mean, that could be McAllister's, that could be Martin's Barbecue, that could be Panera. I mean, that could be very nice restaurants that do happen to have a drive in window. Now, if you want to say it can't be a drive in where people pull their cars and eat in their cars, that's fine. But this plan has always shown restaurant out parcels. And to limit to say you can't have takeout or you can't have a drive in window would significantly impact the type of customer and type of folks that they're able to market these out parcels to. And so that's a concern we have on that. On the hotel issue, what we had negotiated with Planning Commission, what we had negotiated with the EDA was that we would agree to start the hotel and run it simultaneously with the rest of the development. We we never talked about completing construction before residential started, but we committed to doing it first and doing it at the same time. And if it's based on, I mean, the way that it's currently worded, we are fine with. But Mr. Cross can speak to this. A a limitation on a specific percentage or completion is not something we'd ever discussed. And frankly, we just, we couldn't agree to that.
How do we, how do we guarantee that that hotel is going to be built?
I mean, when we submit submit our plans for approval and and submit our, submit those for a building permit and we get out there and start, I mean, I think that's pretty good proof that we're going to build that hotel.
But but as they mentioned, we do have a situation here in Gallatin where a hotel was begun.
I understand that. I I think that's extremely unusual.
But it could happen again.
I think it's extremely unusual, in my opinion.
But it can happen and it's impacted.
I'm in the development business and I've can't think of any time other than maybe this example that I've seen that other than when there's been, you know, hurricane or something down in Florida. I I, you know, I can tell you, once we start a project, we're going to finish it.
We just need something to, you know, say, okay, y'all are going to finish it, you know.
You know, starting in the project with a building permit and a contract awarded and equipment on site and grading and digging foundation. I mean, I I don't, we're not going to, we're not going to pull out of there. We've got too much invested already in this area. We've built a lot of multifamily there already. We plan to build this incredible, what we think is a gateway to Gallatin, frankly. And and we've got a ton of interest already. I can't tell you who these people are yet. But I think it's, you will all be really excited when you find out. And, you know, I just think that, you know, we need to be able to kind of start everything when we start the hotel. I mean, we're fine with starting the hotel first. I mean, it's going to be a great, me, the Marriott or Hilton flag, we're totally fine with that. But we need to be able to kind of go on everything else too. We've got to put the boulevard in, all the master infrastructure, do the road work and then get started on multifamily commercial.
What about if you did the multifamily in phases and we said, okay, you couldn't start the second phase or third phase or whatever until?
You know, typically, this is two hundred and sixty six units. If it were bigger, I I think we could think about phasing it, but we would prefer to just build all this at once. Because it's not, I mean, it's large, but it's not.
Could you just restrict it as far as a CO is concerned and not give them a sticker blockage until the hotel is done? On the, on on all the units? Could we do that?
I think we could talk about something like that. I think.
I think that'd be fair, saying you don't get a CO until the hotel is completed.
I do agree with you on the restaurant about the, because when you actually read this.
Yeah, it's a little, I know.
I I think the part that says for consumption on site within a building or in a designated outdoor dining area or takeout should all be strict.
Let's get the hotel done first.
In the ordinance there.
I I I think Jimmy's on the spot with that, if we could do that.
I think before they get the final CO, we say the hotel's got to be completed at that time before they get the final CO.
I I I think we can, I I think there's something there, Jimmy. I I think the, my only concern is with unforeseen construction delays. Let's say, you know, we start them at the same time and we get ahead with the multifamily, for example, because of supply issues, contract labor, whatever the issue is. And the hotel, you know, we're sitting there with the units ready to go and because the hotel's not finished, we can't lease those units and we, you know, we're carrying that. So that's, that's my only concern there. But I I think maybe there's a way to.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe we do the the second half of the residential or something. We don't give a CO until that's completed.
I think the CO is.
You do already have a commitment from the motel.
We are a, we're a, we we develop hotels, Marriott and Hilton products. So we're an approved developer. We've got two going right now, Embassy Suites and a Fairfield and a Suites in Cool Springs. So it'll be a Marriott or Hilton brand. I can't tell you which one yet, but.
I think the CO could be a good solution.
Can can we pass this on first reading and then come up with these amendments before we get to second reading? And maybe they can get it worked out between now and then.
But I think you've got, I mean, I'm going with this conversation and I think you probably want to go ahead and articulate what your thoughts are before we circle back in the next.
I tell you, I'm.
My thoughts are, let's take out the restaurant part of it.
Well, my thing on that is, is like, could we, is there some way to restrict it where you wouldn't have fast food restaurants? That's the main thing.
I just don't know how you do that with the ordinance written the way it is. How did you find what's fast food and, you know, is that? I don't know if we can get in to start listing.
You could limit the number of drive throughs.
Oh, in the, in the entire development?
Yeah.
It's just so hard to know who's going to.
I know.
You know, like he said, if it's, if I've got Panera and McAllister's and Martin's Barbecue and we've capped it too, well, then I've just lost Martin Bar, you know what I mean?
No, but then you've also got a mess with, you know, we have rows of fast food restaurants and it's a traffic challenge.
I understand and we don't, we're not looking for that. So trust me on that. I I think with the way things are in the food and beverage industry in the last two years, things have really evolved. And to go and takeout and drive through is huge. And restaurants that would have never had a drive through before are now adding drive throughs. Shake Shack is one. I don't know if y'all have been to Shake Shack, but they're doing a nationwide expansion. I think they did thirty seven stores last year and twenty one of them had drive throughs. All their original stores, none of them had drive throughs.
What about one that doesn't have indoor seating or something like that, like a, the drive, like a Sonic or a?
A drive in?
Drive in.
Yeah, that's probably fine. I mean, I, you know, Sonic's the only one I can think of.
Well, Whataburger, something like that.
There are, there there's things like, oh, what's that little place at River Gate, Checkers, that doesn't have indoor seating, that's strictly a drive through. So, you know, you could certainly eliminate those.
We can say that it's got to have seating inside.
Indoor seating?
Indoor seating and and no drive up, I mean, no drive ups, but it's got to have indoor seating. I mean, is there a way to restrict that, Susan? I guess that's your question.
Well, currently, the way that it's written, I think we can come up with something. But these are things that are listed in our zoning ordinance. So now we're getting outside of the zoning ordinance and just crafting something anew. And that makes it a little bit difficult. You might ask Mr. McCord to speak on that.
Yeah, this definition, there there are two food service definitions and the other one is implied that it's a sit down type restaurant where you get out of your vehicle, you walk in, you sit down, you serve, get served and you have waiters and waitresses and so forth. This definition is pretty broad and it's been in there for a while, but it is a fast food restaurant. It's your Sonics, it's your Taco Bells, could be your Panera Bread's and your McAllister's too, because those, as they were mentioning, are evolving to meet a market demand for driving, particularly as we've seen in the pandemic. So you don't get to pick and choose which one you want, though. If it has a drive in window, it's a drive in restaurant, whether it's McDonald's or whether it's Steaks to Go or something.
Yeah, I I do think that we need to amend our zoning ordinance to update that definition, but we can't do that right now.
I would, I would probably, I would think the good path would be limiting the number of drive throughs, just.
We need a.
They may be for.
Do we need a limit, well, a minimum on what a indoor seating is? You can put one table up and say, I've got indoor seating.
Now we're making it difficult.
Get in the weeds.
Yeah, I would just, I I I understand that concern. I think it's, how do we know what? Yeah, I I, it's tough to say. I mean.
What would.
I'd hate to say it's twelve and then, you know, we got a great user who everyone would welcome and they're like, oh, well, we we need.
I I totally understand where we're trying to go with this and and I have to agree with everybody. But also, when you want to make a mark, a walkable community and you have restaurants, and I keep using Starbucks, but when you have those kind of restaurants in a walkable community, that's what they want. That's what the generation now wants, is those Starbucks type restaurants in there. And when you're going to limit those in a walkable community, and that's what we're trying to make here on Green Lane everywhere, is a walkable community. We're not doing justice to what we're trying to accomplish.
They don't need a drive through, they can walk in.
We also want some really nice, fine dining at some point.
Well, see too, we've got, we've got to take consideration of of this pandemic that we're dealing with now. A lot of people, even if you got a set interest, they don't want to come in San Antonio, they want to grab their food and go.
Well, but the truth is, we don't want fast food row over there.
I understand, I understand. We don't either, yeah. Are y'all familiar with Berry Farms down in Combs Station?
Absolutely.
That's kind of inspiration here and they've got drive throughs. They've got, it's a custard yogurt, frozen yogurt place right in the town center. And they've got, you can't really see it, it kind of comes around the back, but there's a drive through there. They also have the best looking Sonic you've ever seen. Not that we want Sonic, but they do allow that down there. And that's, that's an example of a master plan and I think everybody around Middle Tennessee points to as a model. You know, and it doesn't seem to negatively affect it.
Very strict sign, uh, sign ordinance there.
And a, and a lot of it has to do.
Assign, yes, yes.
A lot of it has to do with, you know, like in building, I talked about this earlier, but how the planning makes them, the architecture and everything like that, you know, stick to your guns.
Well, that's a great point, because you talk about.
Signage everything, don't, you know.
You can make it difficult.
They got a plan, let's deviate from it, make it look nicer, like.
I was going to say, you guys in Planning Commission can make it difficult on users by, you know, I think.
The problem with that, we don't see the Planning Commission, they do it, so.
Right, so they have the ability to make it difficult on a, I don't want to single out a fast food restaurant, but just think of one and say, look, you know, you can, you can make it real hard on them to get approved if that's the way you want to do it, based on the current ordinance.
Let me make a suggestion, just so, because I don't think we're going to get the answers that we want related to restaurants, drive throughs, et cetera, tonight. What if Councilman Alexander withdrew his second, you withdrew your amendment and he proposed amendment that included the ordinance as presented amended with whatever language you all choose to on the part of the completion of the hotel, the retail business supply addition and the wholesale sales addition. And next reading, you can address the restaurant piece.
That's right, I withdraw.
I I withdraw my second.
But you don't have, you've not reached resolution on the hotel piece either yet.
I'm, I'm making amendment then, if we go with the hotel, what would we decide to do, the hidden?
Suggestion was that before the.
Certificate of occupancy.
Before the second phase of the, before the second phase of the residential could get their CO, that the hotel had to be completed.
No, I thought it was the first phase you were talking about.
Huh?
Thought you were talking about the first phase.
Second.
Second phase. And that's like you said, if you're starting to build a first phase and you got, you know, a third of it completed, you don't want to let those buildings sit there and not be able to rent them until, you know, you 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 finish all the rest of them. It could be a year later down the road, so.
Yeah, but I also don't want resources and supplies going to residential over the hotel.
Okay, I'm I'm with Jimmy on that then, we'll do that. Yeah, and then, and then also we'll put in the retail business supply and wholesale sales, that as worded.
I'm good with that.
Take out the food service and we'll decide on that coming up, so. You second?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, so I'm going to try and and restate it. So Councilman Hayes has offered the amendment that the hotel, before the second phase of residential, can be given a certificate of occupancy, the hotel must be complete, that retail business supplies will be excluded from inclusion as will wholesale sales as described in the attached memo. That is, the amendment is offered to the ordinance presented this evening. Have a second by Councilman Overton?
I got a question. You're saying that the hotel's got to be completed before they start the second phase?
No, before they can get a CO on the second phase of residential.
And and I would just ask.
They can do anything simultaneously related to commercial during all this.
And I would just ask if y'all want to put this food service stuff in there, that the developer get with Susan and everybody else. I mean, Marty knows and and get with everybody else and y'all work something out before our second reading.
Second reading may in January anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So you got plenty of time to try to work it out, it's okay. So if y'all get with Bill McCord and Susan, whoever, and y'all try to work it out. Bill McCord wants something, he's waving his hand.
New, I've heard is made part of the motion is a second phase for the residential. And I never heard that there was a first phase.
That's true, it's not phased, you're exactly right.
Well, that's, that's where we can. So they could build ninety nine percent of the units in phase one.
That's right, because they said they want to build all two sixteen at once. That's why I thought when you first brought that up, it was on the first thing. But they didn't want to phase the residential, you're correct. Or is the multifamily first phase residential? What's the second phase of residential that Ms.?
That's what I'm.
There hasn't, I mean, the way it's presented is it's all built at one time, which is what we prefer to do at this number of units. If it were four hundred units, we'd probably phase it.
That is, that makes your proposal inapplicable.
Not a second phase, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Because it's not, there's not two phases, it's just one phase. I don't agree.
I think it's the CO on the residential.
Huh? Which one?
I think it should be the CO on the residential, because it's two hundred and sixteen multifamily units.
Just, just to, you guys understand, the way we do the residential is we'll deliver a building at a time. So if the site is a square or rectangle, we'll kind of start in one corner and it'll get finished first and then it goes all the way, let's say, to the back. And it may take a year sometimes to get that one built.
This might work then. How many buildings are there?
Two sixteen.
Twenty three?
All right, so what if we say, just, just pretend like there's a phase?
Not to exceed ten buildings with COs until the hotel's complete?
Like the last, with phase two is the last, what, did you say twenty three? So.
Halfway, halfway through it, whatever that is.
Is that something we need to decide tonight? Because I think it would be helpful for us to understand.
We can amend it again in second reading.
Our timelines.
So.
I don't want to commit to something that gets me in trouble.
So where we are, we're back with you needing to withdraw your second, you needing to withdraw your motion. And making the motion that the CO be based upon the second thirteen. Phase one would be the first twelve buildings. Phase one would be the first twelve buildings, phase two would be the second thirteen buildings.
Everybody needs to be aware that we're, what you're seeing as two phases is the same as what we're seeing.
But that needs to, I mean, but this is something that we can pass on first reading. So anyway, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, that's what we'll do then. All right, I'll make an amendment that we don't occupy or don't do a C O. What was it until the?
First twelve.
Yeah.
Second thirteen won't be C Oed until the completion of the hotel.
Till completion of.
Yeah, it'd be.
Oh, 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 okay. Sorry, I was thinking.
So second, second, yeah, second twelve, last twelve.
You do have last.
Twenty-three.
Let me finish my motion, y'all. We'll do that and then add the other two, the.
What is it, the? Retail and wholesale.
Retail and wholesale sales, okay?
So you're saying that second twelve buildings, okay.
Second.
Everyone under seeing where we are.
Not a second twelve.
You say the last twelve, yes.
Not a second twelve. If it's twenty-three.
Oh, the last twelve.
Last twelve.
Last twelve.
First one, first phase would be the first eleven, the second phase would be twelve.
It's gotta go through public here in a second reading, so.
Twenty-five in my brain.
You can always change it for a second reading if you come back to it.
Okay, so the motion now is that the C O for the second twelve buildings, the last twelve buildings, will be based upon the completion of the hotel. The exclusions will remain for retail, or the exclusions will be added for retail business supply and wholesale supply, wholesale sales. And you guys are kind of tabling the whole contemplation of the food service with, for more information and discussion. So that's, the amendment is offered by Councilman Hayes, seconded by Councilman Overton. Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, the amendment passes. Bring us back to the regular, the original motion now is amended. Is there any further discussion on that for you all? You have the motion as presented this evening. This is first reading on ordinance O two one 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 dash seventy-two as presented and amended this evening. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading is unanimously passed. Thank you, gentlemen, for navigating. Moving along now, item number six, which is second reading, or on, I'm sorry, it is the second amended resolution R two one one zero dash seventy-three. And Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution temporarily adjusting certain rates of pay. I make a motion to amend the resolution that was previously adopted on October twenty-sixth by adding the language in the second amended resolution that allows those employees whose positions are included in the resolution, who are within four steps of the highest pay grade, to have an increase equivalent to the highest step and for those at step eighteen to have an increase of two point five percent. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion or questions on this? Seeing none, this is second amended resolution R two one one zero dash seventy-three. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Item seven is resolution R two one 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 dash seventy-eight, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin Liberty Creek subdivision. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Resolution R two one 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 dash seventy-eight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number eight is resolution R two one 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 dash seventy-nine, Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution designating Juneteenth and Columbus Day as official holidays for municipal government employees and amending personnel rule sixteen dash one. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? Our employees will be very grateful. All in favor of approval of resolution R two one 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 dash seventy-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is unanimously approved. Item number nine is resolution R two one 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 dash eighty, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending personnel rules fifteen, employee development and training. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion or any questions on this? None? Okay, this is resolution R two one 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 dash eighty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item ten is resolution R two one 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 dash eighty-one, Councilman Hayes.
This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin endorsing and supporting an application for a transportation alternatives grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the development of a segment of all-state gap trail from Kennesaw Boulevard to Thorn Boulevard in the City of Gallatin. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? This is resolution R two one 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 dash eighty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. And that concludes our regular agenda and brings us down to other business. And I do have something sad to share with each of you. I'm going to ask that you all offer your prayers and lend some thoughts to the Campbell family of Hendersonville. Alderman Pat Campbell passed away either late last night or early this morning. Dear man, very involved in Hendersonville. And I know that's a sad loss, certainly for his family and friends, but also for the community of Hendersonville. So I know that they would appreciate your thoughts and prayers. I did want to pass that on to you all. We do have some items under other business from some of our department heads, but I'd ask if there are any council members here that have other business first. Seeing none. Chief Feman?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'm just here tonight to request permission to apply for the FEMA assistance to firefighter grant. I apologize for not being or having this on the agenda for the last work session. This grant was just made available and we have some pretty strict deadlines to meet for that. We have to submit our application by December seventeenth and I'm asking for approval if we could move this to the council meeting on the agenda for December seventh, if that was possible. We're evaluating our eligible items. They've kind of changed the funding priority this time around, which FEMA kind of does from time to time. The maximum amount we could apply for would be a million dollars and that's based on our population and it's a ten percent matching grant. As I said, we're still evaluating the items. What we're trying to do is really determine what our true needs are and then match that with an item that we'll have a reasonable chance of receiving in, when they start awarding the grants. We probably won't see any information back once we submit our request until May of next year at the earliest. And then we have two years from whatever we're awarded to purchase, acquire and place into service and then we have to meet some federal requirements. Of course, paperwork and documentation and follow-up. But I just wanted to bring this forward tonight to just get your permission to put that on the agenda for December seventh, so we can seek that, that grant.
So the maximum impact to the city would be a hundred thousand dollars and we do have the coming budget year in which to place something.
Yeah.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Was it you? Was it you second it? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is unanimously approved. It'll be on the next council meeting. Thank you, Chief Feman.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Tomacalli, you had something as well?
Yes, I just wanted to give an update to council on some dangerous buildings. Back on October nineteenth, we had several that came before the council. There are three that, six forty-seven Pace Street, two fifteen South Boyer Street and ten twenty-five West Street that have not yet pulled permits. You'd given each of these thirty days to pull a permit. They were not declared a dangerous building. Now, ten twenty-five West Street has indicated, their owner has indicated they're going to come in for a permit this week, but so far they have not done that. But I need for this council to make a motion that for six forty-seven Pace Street and two fifteen South Boyer Street, that we go ahead and have a second show calls notice that requires them to show calls on December seventh, for them to come before a hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? And we'll move along to December seventh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved unanimously.
And if I can just give one, one more update, six fifty-six Chamber Street, that one was declared a dangerous building and you gave them sixty days. There's been no change in the property and no contact from the owner. I think someone on the council may have contact with the owner. So if, if you can put either the building department or myself in contact with the owner, so we can try to get that resolved, that would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Tomacalli. And then Ms. Nichols has some information to share.
I wanted to report to you that we sold our water sewer bonds this morning. We had a good sale for the fifteen million dollars in new money that will go for system improvements and renovations. We were able to get an all-in interest rate of two point two nine percent. And then for the fourteen million dollars in refunding of older bonds, we were able to get a two point one three percent interest rate. We did not end up refunding as many bonds as we had hoped because the federal government did not approve the advanced refunding. So we're waiting until April for the two thousand and eleven bonds and look at refunding those at that time. But we had a really good sale this morning, so.
And, and projected savings?
One point one million in interest savings.
I want you to know that Ms. Nichols works really, works really hard on that. With the help of Mr. Kellogg, we had some interesting discussions about our bond writing, so we were doing very, very well. Any questions for anyone? All right, anyone else with other business? Okay, Mr. Harris.
Information. We had met with some representatives Facebook today. I want to make you aware that they're going to resume operations on the rock crushing. I know y'all have gotten a lot of calls in the past on that. We just want to make you aware of that. The times will still be the same from six thirty to six thirty, but I know you get a lot of.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Okay, anyone else? All right. We'll move along now to public recognition on non-aging-related items. So if you're here this evening and you have something that you'd like to speak to that's not on the night's agenda, now'd be your time. Just come forward and introduce yourself. Give us your address. We don't have a quorum, if you leave.
My name is Joe DeBorden. I live at one double oh seven Hart Street. Most of the people in here that have left have heard this before, but I'm going to say it again. Last week I brought up a need for a New Orleans version of eight forty that completes a total loop, loop around National Metroplex. I personally note several notations of acceptance of this proposal. Number one, the D O T doesn't want to receive money from the federal government for transportation projects. And that is because we had a situation the other week when they came to present a program to the Lions Club and they were very tickled that the fact that now eight forty on the south, south end was all done with state money. They have a problem with taking state, federal money. And that creates a problem sometimes. Because we need to have that money come back to our, our communities in Tennessee. And that's one, one of the things that I wanted to touch base on and I think that should, that should be brought forward. I also believe that it should be set up as a resolution that we want to have that happen in our, in our community or the county. And that's not binding on anything. We're not going to pay any money on it. All we're doing is saying we want that happening and that way we put the pressure on the state to be able to come up with something for us. And that's the only reason why I'm coming and talking about that. So I got two other, actually three other questions that I want to ask tonight. One, are we receiving stormwater proceeds from all properties? And that has to do with, for example, the Eaton Yale property on, on Westland, the Old Miracle Forward and all, all open properties that do not have any utilities used. Want to check and see about that. Number two, we have a sign out front that is not usable after dark. And I wish we could either get a new sign put in, as we were talking about doing, or put the light in that one. I think we have people here that could fix that. The next thing is we need to see about getting our, our clock fixed up on the square. I understand it's, it's right twice a day. And I think that we can either fix it or take it down, one of the two. Of course, that's given to us by the Rotary Club and I think it should be maintained. So with that, I give, I give you a due.
Thank you, Mr. DeBorden. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition on non-aging-related items? Seeing no one, that should conclude our business for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Councilwoman George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a lovely evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching and go have a good week and be kind to one another.